Well, what I would love to do is go ahead and get started. We have a recording notice to read. But I just wanted to thank everyone for being here and thank the board for being here as well as staff. This is an extra meeting we added into the calendar. And we decided to make it a public meeting so that all board members would have an opportunity to attend and hear not only the levy information again because we can't hear it enough, but also to make sure that all board members were present and we have an opportunity to listen to staff, students, and our community and what's important to them following the levy presentation. So, thank you to everyone for being here. At this point, I'm going to turn it over to Bonnie who will read the recording notice and then we'll call the meeting to order and proceed from there.
Thank you. Before we begin, we want to share that we will be recording tonight's meeting. We do plan to share this recording publicly in the event that a student, parent, staff, or community member would like to know what was discussed. If you do not wish to be recorded, please let us know at this time. Thank you.
Thank you, Bonnie. So I will call the meeting to order at 6:02 with my pretend gavel. And if you would all mind, please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, everyone. So at this point, I will turn it over to our superintendent to begin the levy presentation.
Thank you, Director Tivado. We're happy to be here. I have two wonderful colleagues, Mr. Carlson and Mr. Collins from Orting High School and Orting Middle that will help join me in this presentation. We want to just start by helping our stakeholders understand the difference between bonds and levies. Bonds, what we really refer to as things for building and construction, so that could be for the purchase of land, renovation of facilities, the building of new facilities, those are generally longer-term debt obligations. So with voter approval, we will sell those at somewhere between a 10- and 25-year timeframe. Those are paid back each year with interest through property taxes. Levies, on the other hand, are shorter-term obligations. There's a few different types of levies that districts can run. We can run what's called a capital or technology levy. Those are up to six years in length and generally for things like one-to-one devices or major construction projects like a roof replacement that might be beyond the scope of a general fund purchase. That can be bad. Transportation levies, sometimes systems get behind in their yellow fleet replacements. So a transportation levy could be up to two years. That's for the repurchase of yellow fleet, adding new vehicles. And then what's called, what we're going to talk about tonight is the enrichment program and operation levy. It used to be called the maintenance and operation levy pre-2018. With the McCleary decision, the state declared that they were now fully funding education. Prior to that time, somewhere in the neighborhood of 22, all the way up to 28% of district budgets were paid for by local property taxes. Well, what we found after 2018 is that that really didn't cover all of the needs and obligations that districts have, and we're going to share some of those with you tonight. When we think about where those levy dollars go, those are for things like staffing for programs that are funded by the state. It could be for materials or supplies for curriculum or things like that, operating expenses to run programs like athletics or activities. So we'll share many of those with you, but when we think about an enrichment and program operation levy, those are allowed by law for up to a four-year timeframe. So what we'd like to do, share tonight, is a little bit more about what does that look like for Orting's context and where would some of those local dollars go? So this time around, Orting School District is asking for a four-year enrichment and operation levy. That four-year allows for a couple of different advantages for the district. On the one hand, it saves taxpayers money. It costs anywhere between $55,000 and $80,000 to run an election. It varies each year because the cost of running the election are divided by the number of things on the ballot. So we're not quite sure exactly how much it costs when we put something before, but by moving to every four years from every two years, that means every two years we can save our local taxpayers up to that amount, which over the long term is a significant savings. The other advantage that we have is the district can forecast in the longer term when we make considerations about adding new clubs, any new sports, any types of intervention programs, when we talk about activity bus. We have a four-year look that we know things are going to be sustainable, so it gives us a little bit more of a secure footing when we're considering adding new. This time around, we estimate that four-year levy each year to cost our local taxpayers $1.88 per $1,000 assessed valuation. The way you figure out the net cost is you multiply $1.88 times however many thousands of dollars your home has worth. So if it's worth $400,000, simply you would take 400 times $1.88. That would give you the estimated cost each year. Levies are different than bonds. Bonds require what's called a supermajority. Levies require a simple majority, so we think of 50% plus one. So with all the voters that vote in this election, if half plus one more vote yes, then the levy would be approved. And unlike the bond, there's no validation requirement for a levy. So you don't need to reach a certain percentage of the previous election for it to pass or be ratified. It's just a simple majority of whoever votes in that context. When we look at Orting's historical tax rate, pre-growth, back when we had about $1 billion of assessed valuation, that cost a little bit more to the average homeowner. We were about $4, a little above, a little bit below, per $1,000 assessed valuation. When McCleary came along and the state declared we're fully funded, that levy lid was set at $1.50. And then pretty quickly thereafter, I believe it was the next year, the state raised that lid up to $2.50 per $1,000 assessed valuation. So that's the most that Orting could ask for. We asked for approximately $2.07 of the last time we put the measure out in 2020. One of the reasons we believe this will cost our taxpayers less is because our assessed valuation has grown. Orting School District spans beyond the valley floor up into the hillside, to the south and to the north, and homes have been adding into our district boundaries, which means that in aggregate, we have more assessed valuation, so that dollar price averages out a little bit lower. When we look at growth of where we're going for the next four years during this levy, we are seeing some more coming to our system through the Tahali neighborhood. They're estimating about 1,300 homes, upland 765 and daybreak 535. So with those 2,600 homes, we think we could add up to 1,300 students. And when we think about clubs and sports and programs that help students along, we're trying to project that we have enough resources so that we can sustain these. And not only sustaining what we have, but we're looking through the lens, as we discussed as a board, about can we have early learning opportunities? What about support for social, emotional, mental health, behavior? So as we look at partnerships and look at our own system, we're trying to make sure we have the resources to respond to really what our students or families are saying they really could use to help all of our students be successful. When we think about timelines here, just in the last few days, ballots arrived in our district. So those are in the hands of our voters and the election day is February 8th. So somewhere around 8 o'clock that night, we'll have our first glimpse when they report results of how that measure is doing. The levy will be finally certified by the 18th of February. So our goal this evening is really to share with our voters, our community, staff, students, as you discussed, where do these dollars go? We will say 100% of these dollars stay local, so the state doesn't get any of the dollars that are raised locally. It goes right to the county treasurer and are dispersed primarily in October and April back into the Orting School District. Now, the thing about the levies now is not a single penny could be spent on things that are funded by the state. So part of McCleary's decision and the way, the reason this is called enrichment is because we can't spin this on any staffing or any program that is funded by the state. So 100% of the dollars stay here and it can only go to things that are not funded by the state, and that's audited every year, as you know, in the financials that Marcy Danant presents. So, Mr. Carlson, Assistant Principal of Orting High School, and Kevin Collins, Principal at Orting Middle, they're going to help share some of the places where these dollars go locally. Mr. Carlson?
That's open to me. Thanks. I'm Kevin Collins. I'm the principal at the middle school, and it's a pleasure to be here tonight and to talk about athletics, which is a really, really important area of our schools. It's never been more important. This year, with coming back from COVID, we really didn't have athletics over the last year and a half, and our students really, really missed having access to athletics. It's just so important to have that connection. In our fall season at the middle school, we had over 150 athletes out. And so none of that is funded by the state, all levy dollars. And we have a really special situation here in Orting. Our middle school athletes, we don't have any cuts. And so every student who wants to come out, we encourage them to come out and get involved. We also have really small ratios of coaches to athletes, which I think is one of the most special things about Orting is we have that intimacy where coaches can really get to know students and really get them that one-on-one attention that they need to learn the sport and also to have those connections. We have an activity bus, which has been something we haven't, my first few years in the district did not have. And so students who don't have a ride home, that's no longer preventing them from coming out for athletics. They can get a ride home at 4:40 at night on the bus. So that's been a huge, huge add for us. We don't have pay-to-play here in Orting. Many districts around the state, if you want to participate in athletics, your parents have to pay to help you participate, and it's free for all of our students, and we would absolutely love to keep it that way. So Bonnie, go ahead and go to the, or Ed, go to the next slide. And also activities. We have, we want our students up in the upper right-hand corner there. We have all of our clubs, about 10 clubs here at the middle school. So even if you're not an athlete or involved in sports, we have those after-school activities that connect to each student's individual interest. Our most popular clubs at the middle school are for anime and dungeons and dragons. And that just really gets students involved and connected to our school. They have so many ways to get involved and get connected, and that's all levy funded, and we want to keep it that way. So I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Carlson to talk about special education.
Yeah, thanks, Kevin. Student support services is a very important part of our mission here in Orting School District, and levy dollars support and enhance what we're able to do because this is a largely underfunded area that the state brings us for general education funding, most notably our nursing staff, our school psychologist staff, our counseling staff. Some examples around that, we're funded at .06 of a school psychologist. We have four in the district. You look at our elementary caseload, the state gives just one elementary counselor for every 830 students approximately. Our nursing staff, largely underfunded. And then you can imagine right now with the things we have going on with COVID. But in addition to that, prior to COVID, we had an increase in medical issues and concerns around some of our most vulnerable population that our nursing staff supports. And a lot of this, we've seen recently, that our student support services really has had to have a call to arm recently because of the increase in social, emotional needs, the learning needs of children, including mental health needs of kids. And so the school's been tasked to take on much more than just reading, writing, and arithmetic, and social, emotional learning is extremely important and rests on the backs of our student support services. And last but not least, the state funds 13.5% of special education staff, excuse me, students, and we are currently sitting at over 2% over that. And so that, those dollars all have to fall back to our local levy to support our special education students, our students with disabilities, and our paraeducators, over 50 paraeducators who work in our school district to support those students are largely funded through the levy, and also many of them live locally and bring that right back into our school community and economy with the work they do to our kids. Moving on, transportation is a really important one as well, where the state funding model for transportation, and as Superintendent Hatfield talked about earlier, with the projected growth that we're going to experience, when you look at the current funding, we get about $220,000 from the state in terms of the general dollar apportionment. We just had to replace four buses this year, two of the regular yellow buses and then two of the smaller buses. The cost, the net difference on the cost between what the state gives us and what local levy dollars would have to pick up is $260,000 just for those four buses alone. Add in a fleet that's declining and getting older with projected growth and the need to add new buses, and you can see how there is a definite need for local levy dollars to support adds to transportation as we move forward in the next four years. I'll turn it back over to Kevin so he can talk about some other important things and levy funds related to safety and security.
So one of the most important responsibilities we have in education is the safety of our students. It's, I mean, it's one of our number one priority, and levy dollars really ensure the safety of our students. One of the striking figures that I was told is the state funds zero monitors. So when we think about our lunches, elementary school playgrounds, you just cannot imagine these places without the support we have from our amazing recess monitors, lunch monitors throughout the district that keep eyes and ears on our students and make sure that we have that safety in place. We also have a wonderful partnership with the Orting Police. We have Officer Boone, who really is part of that partnership that we're able to pay for with levy dollars. Any administrator knows that security cameras are just a tremendous asset for us in terms of we ever have to investigate situations and figure out any safety scenarios, and those are all paid for by levy dollars. We have a partnership with Puget Sound ESD where when we have these kind of higher-level things, they've supported us with a threat assessment process and protocol that has really helped to keep students safe when we have dangerous situations that arise. And then technology. COVID really, obviously, when we went to remote learning, brought this to the forefront, but this has been there for years. When I came to the district from Kent, Kent was a one-to-one district back in 2007 when I started, where all students had access to a laptop. And so really, we launched into, when we went into the pandemic, all students had to get a Chromebook. And so we drastically expanded. I think it was one of the best things that came out of that experience was going to one-to-one, but that continues to be a need. Those machines, they don't last forever, so they need to be maintained. And we've really shifted as a district. Our teachers post things on Google Classroom, and so it's just become an integral part of our education delivery is that technology, but we need those levy dollars to continue to support it, to grow, and utilize that technology the best way we can in education.
Thanks, Kevin. Another area that levy dollars really support is around a professional learning and intervention system for kids. The state funds three professional development days for teachers in August and one coming up here on January 28th. Outside of that, professional development for teachers, it's very important and integral to the work that they can do, as you can imagine, to support the students in our school in this day and age. The ongoing professional development costs come out of our levy dollars. In addition to that, we're able to use levy dollars to purchase data sources like Home Room and screeners, which will help us be able to target interventions to kids around specific academic areas. And sometimes this is in conjunction between the use of technology and the teacher in the classroom, as well as the professional development to learn how to do that. So this costs money, and these dollars are not always funded 100% by the general ed dollars that we get from the state. So the levy dollars help us to identify which kids are in the gap and then intervene across the system K-12 and begin to target specific areas using some of these tools that are able to be purchased through levy dollars around professional learning and intervention.
I'm going to talk briefly about substitutes. We get very, very little substitute funding, just does not cover what we need, and we get zero funding for classified substitutes, which you just can't imagine our schools, again, without our guest teachers. This year, it's been even increased need with the number of teachers we've put out due to COVID protocols and various other things. But when we think about our students, they really truly need those substitute teachers, these qualified and caring substitute teachers that come into our classrooms. If we did not have them, it just puts so much extra stress in our system on teachers who have to cover, maybe combine classes. It's just not the situation we want. We want those substitute teachers to be able to come in and adequately cover for teachers and fill in and give the students the education they need when teachers can't be there.
And last but not least, just really quick, highlight facilities and how levies support our facilities. You can see that less than four maintenance grounds staff are funded by state dollars and less than 11 custodians, and I can just tell you, it requires a lot more than that to keep this place in tip-top shape, and our levy dollars have supported that. And I can tell you that Curtis and his crew do an incredible job of keeping our facilities up and running, but it's getting more expensive to do that, and those costs, unfortunately, they add up over time, and you can see just a couple of examples of expenditures on this slide around roof repair and replacement, boiler repair, and anticipated turf replacement out of the stadium. And because goods and materials costs are increasing, we know that those costs are going to increase, and without the support of the local levy, it's imperative that we have those dollars to be able to continue to provide safe and working buildings and facilities for our kids to have the best experiences here in the Orting School District. And I just want to tell you really quickly, not only do these individuals keep our schools clean, keep them up and running, but they impact learning in the classroom. And just a quick story, Eric, our maintenance worker, is meeting next week with our egg department out in the greenhouse to help them operationalize a sprinkler system. He created and built that, saving us dollars, but also then turning that project over to the kids to maintain, and that's the kind of stuff that our maintenance are so proud of the work that they do with kids. They don't just show up and clean, they don't just show up and repair, but they actually import, excuse me, they actually support student learning outcomes with the work that they do here in our school, and we're very proud of the work that they do and could not have that without our levy dollars.
So that's a high-level overview of where some of the dollars go. It's not meant to be the exhaustive list. We're trying to put more information out on our website and social media and just make sure we're clear. In aggregate, the levy represents about 10% again of our total budget, so it's not what it used to be pre-McLeary, whereas 22% to 28%, that's true. However, as you've seen tonight, just there are several areas that are still not fully funded that takes local support. If approved, this levy would generate a tax collection in calendar years 2023, 24, 25, and 26. So we would receive a portion of this levy into next school year and then the full net effect the following school year. If not approved, of course, then that adjusts the collection for next year of what we would have available to us. So that concludes our presentation, and I know you have an interest in hearing from our community and stakeholders, so Mr. Carlson, Mr. Collins, myself will be on the line and happy to entertain any questions you or our community may have.
Thank you very much, gentlemen. I just can't, well, I can't thank you enough. You know, something that's been very important to our board is transparency and communication with our community. So I really do appreciate that you've gone into greater detail, more than just kind of the high-level bullet points of what a levy funds, but how specifically it impacts our schools and our students. So thank you for that detail. I, you know, I have some information I'd like to read for the community, kind of for this next phase of the listen and learn. Again, I appreciate everybody being here this evening and thank you to staff for staying on board in case there's questions that you can more appropriately answer with better details than maybe the board has. I would like to kind of establish some kind of ground rules for the evening. We want to hear from the community, you know, bottom line, that's why we're here tonight, and we hope that you will ask questions for the purpose of gaining clarity and understanding, and we'll do the same, that we express ourselves in terms of our personal needs and interests and the outcomes we hope to achieve. So we want to know if you do have a concern, you know, what does it look like if that gets resolved, so what kind of solutions are you hoping for? And we're going to listen respectfully and sincerely and hope that everybody on the call does as well. So come with a spirit of curiosity. We're here with a spirit of curiosity and a willingness to learn. So to kind of get the conversation started, we have some questions that we'd kind of like to frame this conversation around first. Very simply, we want to know how we're doing, and we want to hear from the community, get your feedback. We also want to know if there's any concerns that you have. We're headed into a new year, and so it's a good time to maybe address those things that have been on your mind. And then we also want to know specifically how we're doing with communication. So that's a rule specifically asked. We've worked hard with staff to improve communication in the district, and we've accomplished so much, but we know there's more to do, and we want to get your feedback on how we're doing with that communication. So with that opening, I would just like to open the call up. I believe if you'd like to speak, just unmute and you'll be able to share your thoughts. Ready, go. This is a little bit odd doing it virtually. Don't be shy to speak up. We're used to operating in this way.
Not odd at all. I just want to say that you guys did an outstanding job explaining what's needed and why it's needed. There's so much of this that I didn't know previously, and it's really good to have that explanation of what the state funds and what you guys have to fund yourself. So that was excellent. Thank you.
Great. Thank you for that. So I'm, I'm not sure myself. I recognize many, if not all, the staff names, but I don't know who's from the community and who's a staff member. But everyone's invited to participate in this. So everything's golden then?
Somebody on Facebook Messenger asking if they can jump in. I sent them the link a while ago.
Oh, great.
We are monitoring and happy to let new people in at any point.
Perfect. Frankly, I don't have a plan if there are no questions, so.
Well, heck, I got one. What's the difference between a classified and a certified substitute?
That's a great question. So it's really in the root duty code of how we report things to the state. So a classroom teacher, teacher on special assignment, any of those positions that hold a teaching certificate, those get four funded substitute days per year. So in aggregate, in our district, for about 100 staff, we receive $65,000. A classified staff, or what's known in the state of Washington as CLS, would be staff that do not hold a teaching or administrative certificate. In fact, the administrators are separated out, so that would be a maintenance worker, grounds worker, custodian, food service, bus driver. So if you believe it, none of those positions receive a single day of substitute coverage. Yet I would tell you, if we didn't have substitute bus drivers, we're not getting kids to school. If we don't have substitute custodians in the midst of a pandemic, we're in a world of hurt. If we don't have front office people in our staff meeting and greeting, answering phones and troubleshooting that, we're just, that's a nightmare. So none of those staff and no administrative staff receive substitute funding from the state. So it's four days per teacher, yet the district provides 12 sick days for everybody across the board, and there's other leave as well available. So in the midst of a pandemic, the number of substitute days we've had has dramatically increased, and you saw about $450,000, $470,000 of a gap between what the state funds and what we get to pay for that just in the pandemic. This year, we believe that number is going to be astronomical. There's just no way around it with the amount of quarantine we've had.
Can I add something to that, Ed? And don't forget, we want to stay in a way that our employees And don't forget, we want to stay in a way that our employees want to stay here. We want to retain our employees. So we want to make sure that our compensation, our sick days, those kinds of things, is not less than surrounding districts, which may also have the 12 days. So it's important to take care of our employees that way, too.
Exactly. Jenny posted a question in the chat. I don't know if everybody could see that. If you've just called in, maybe not, but she's asking, can you explain a bit more what a monitor is or does? I know a lot of people don't know what they do. That's a good comment. Good question.
I'll be happy to take that. So from our apportionment model, it takes a little over 5,000 children, about 5,200, to receive funding for one safety security person. That's one person. We would argue, and we have monitors, those are the folks in our lunchroom that help students get into their lunchroom, get in the lunch line. Those are folks in the playground, making sure that kids are safe in their interaction and making sure that no harm comes from anything outside. So those are all the people we've assigned on campus, playground, in the lunchroom, things of that nature, just to help manage the physical plant. We have additional staff in our world that work in crosswalks. Some of those we can code to transportation, but that's where we see a deficit as well. So anybody that would be kind of the crossing guard, maybe things like that would be in that area. Another area where we have monitors would be traffic direction. We have a staff member at the high school. So we have many, many people across all of our schools that are in that capacity, and we don't receive funding for barely a half of the one person. We have Randy Gallatin at the high school who consults in all of our schools with regard to major investigations and safety security. So those are just a number of the positions that readily come to mind that we have in that world. And again, we receive funding for about three and a half, four hours a day total. Nursing, similarly, we would argue, and you heard the data, we would argue that a health tech in every school is essential. And during the times of COVID, sometimes we might get 15, 18 students identified in close contact right now. And so the amount of parents and families and follow-up and paperwork we have to do is just insane. And yet we receive the .37 metric. That's less than a half of a person per day for every school, 2,600 children. So those are just a few examples of where we see discrepancy. Now, we are working on advocacy for the state. So right now, there are bills in consideration to lobby for more support around mental health, social, emotional, nursing. So schools continue to advocate for support of what we would say it takes to keep us whole. Today, those gaps currently exist, and we have an interest in maintaining those supports for kids.
You know, I'll chime in at during our previous levy, one thing that was, you know, some of the similar funding, it just wouldn't cover our schools. And, you know, it made me think to myself, at what point during the day would it be okay for us to not have some kind of healthcare nursing staff available to our students to administer medicine or take care of injuries or, you know, even pre-COVID, not to have someone available in our, in our schools to take care of the kids, just a basic healthcare needs, maybe a fever, you know? There's not a time during the day where I think that we could do without someone. So I think that's something important to think about regardless of COVID. It's important for us to have that.
I wanted to chime in about the monitors and tell people also that some of those people are the people that are the most important person to your kid. Maybe they check in with the lunchroom person every day, the morning person, they say hi to them, the playground. Kids are always visiting with the playground monitors. Those are people that, that help the kids also through their positive relationships with, with the kids. And, you know, kids always love recess. So the fact that there's an adult out there to be there, someone who's a positive person in their life is another plus for our kids.
That's a good question. I have, there was a bullet point on one of the slides that said for out-of-district placements, and I've seen that, I've seen that bullet a hundred times, and I know what it is, but it made me think that maybe there's some people who don't. So if someone could speak to that, that'd be great.
Sure. I'll be happy to answer that one as well. So the way we receive special education funding, we, up to 13 and a half percent of our aggregate population, you look at the whole 100%, we get funding up to the point where 13 and a half percent of our students qualify for special education. Any point we exceed that percentage, we receive no additional remuneration from the state. That remuneration goes for your teachers, your resource teachers, your curriculum, supports. Many of our students with IEPs require occupational therapy, speech and language therapy, physical therapy, you name it. There's just a lot of different supports. When we look at what an out-of-district placement might be, that might be a student that we've identified that this placement here in the Hoarding School District is not appropriate. Generally, those are very high behavior, medical specialty type needs. An out-of-district placement for one child could be $80,000, $90,000 per year or more. So that dramatically exceeds the revenue per person that we get through that special education pot. And so the way we look at levy funds, we look at the aggregate of what we receive for special education and then the aggregate cost, and generally, we're several hundreds of thousands of dollars apart. Whatever that miss or difference is, that's what the levy picks up because there's no other pot for it. So that's what the out-of-district placement is. On certain cases, there's a place, well, a program called Safety Net where we can apply for some lost cost back. We don't get any remuneration back from Safety Net until we've spent about $32,000, $33,000 of district money. So it's that pot that we don't receive Safety Net for or we're not awarded, where the levy really helps to pick that up. That's the difference.
Thank you.
Good question. Which is why we love this. I just want to say I appreciate you, board, taking the time and helping to get this conversation going. One of the biggest challenges we always have is communication and understanding finance. It's a bugger in the world of schools. If one tried to pick up our budget and unpack 25,000 lines of code, just it's hard to make sense of that. There's a lot of things, who pays for what? And so just being able to be transparent and name it and tell our story, I just appreciate you reaching that out, making that explicit work.
I will, I will say, it does seem like there's a large gap in the difference between what's needed and what's funded. And with what I do for work, sometimes I see government entities take a long time to get caught up, like USDA, they consider, you know, like TAF's rural, a rural area. And so things are very slow-moving. But what I'm worried about is looking at what we're given versus what we're needing. Where are they getting that from? It just seems like we're so far behind to buy a couple of school buses and still be needing the 250 grand from another source. Do they not know what these things cost? I mean, where, to get a visual of if we took what we were given and we just had those folks stacked up against what we need, it seems like it's a very big difference. Is this something that we have to push for? You're talking legislation or something like that? Like, when, when do they wake up and reassess what areas are needing and why, why do you think that there's such a big difference between the two?
Yeah. Good question. I saw someone raise their hand, but I can answer that question. The way funding for schools lives in law for staffing, it's called what's the prototypical staffing model, and it's a decimal. And that decimal translates into an apportionment formula of what we receive that I don't think most people understand, honestly. So if you look at the decimal in law of what constitutes funding for a school psychologist, for instance, they put a .006, and they use that times the number of students that you have, they create a metric out of that. Normal people would say, okay, if we think an elementary school should be 500 students, we would want to have a conversation about how many health room people, how many monitors, how many office people would it take to run a normal school? That's the interest we would want to give to. The decimal function in law doesn't make it explicit or easy to understand. So inevitably, WASTA, your governing organization, and many of you engage in advocacy in the last week related to local legislators, the way you have to change that perception is to put the reality, the real case out there. The way we do that in funding, RC every year reports our F-196 are closed, and she shows the gaps in our budget of where we are deficit. That data feeds to the state so they can see the areas that we are not fully funded in. And the way the audit or the levy comes into play, every one of those minuses, we take that revenue over to the levy, and that's how we make that account whole or pay that bill, if you will. So we do the reporting to the state that way, but also we have to turn these decimals into real numbers. So we share with our legislators the same data that you received so they can look and say, .37 nurses, well, that's not enough. And we try to advocate in the legislative branch to say, here's the decimal or the number that we think would help to keep us whole. Over time, when those moves are made by the state, we're able to decrease ask in certain areas because those are considered funding. That's kind of where you see the drop from 22% to 28% down to 10%. So this session, like I said, there's some proposals around school psychologists, nursing, social, emotional, mental health. So each session, a priorities kind of emerge, and then we see where our legislators take the conversation. And somewhere this spring, we'll see if that means any additional remuneration for us for next year.
Great answer. Thank you. Sounds like a broken formula, but appreciate it.
It's broken still, and part of our role as school officials is to help everybody understand our context. And one of the beautiful things about school board and local is we can decide what's important locally for us, and then we can help direct where those local dollars go because that's completely up to us, that's not up to the state. So that's 100% local expenditure and local control.
Great. Good question. I want to, Amy raised her hand. I want to.
Yeah. I just got a question. I don't fully understand how I knew that funding was from state, first state that is in Hoarding. But what about students that are out of Hoarding and go to a different district and or by first await their, you know, Sumner School District and come to Hoarding? How do we get paid for them or the kind of a, we hope we send one away and pay for them so we watch the tax dollars, their long-term earnings?
That's, that's a great question. So I'd be happy to answer that. So there's really a couple of different pieces, and you alluded to that, that comprise the funding formula. One of those is what's called apportionment. Full-time enrolled students is what we look at. So any student that's enrolled in our district, we receive one FTE for. That's approximately $8,700. So if the student was completely enrolled in Sumner, Sumner School District, we're going to receive that money from the state. However, if that student was a Hoarding School District resident, the property taxes stay local. So any portion of taxes that a local Hoarding School District resident pays would stay in the Hoarding School District. So Sumner School District wouldn't give that piece. So there is kind of some incentive for a district to try to hang on or not lose people, depending on the case maybe. Inevitably, what happens when you have many districts close by, people make those decisions for all kinds of reasons. Maybe a parent works in Sumner, so they wanted to wave their student in, or I'm a wrestler and I want to come to Hoarding to wrestle, I'm a water pole person, I want to go to Emerald Ridge. So there's a lot of that movement that tends to shift around in schools that have room and capacity. Generally, try to take people is what it looks like, but what's happening all across our region now with all the home roads is they're running out of capacity to take transferred people. So that's less and less of an issue. But anybody that waved into Hoarding from a neighbor district, we would get the apportionment piece and any federal dollars that flowed. So if that student was part of title program or pre-reduced launch, we would give those benefits. So we wouldn't receive a property tax for the remuneration.
So kind of piggyback that, the students this year through COVID and whatnot, has, has that factor changed with the students who are, I guess, residents within district but have opted to do a homeschool route, whether it be a public homeschool, like a online program or private entity? Same idea applies, correct?
Correct. If you withdraw the homeschool, then you, then the school district does not receive that apportionment. Any of our families will kind of what's called a shared FTE where they might do homeschool for several subjects, but send a student here for performing arts or some other specialty elective or things that they can't replicate at home. In that case, we receive a piece of that apportionment. So every class enrolled, we receive what's called about a .17 FTE. So it's the one, the full 1.0 divided by six. So however much they're here, we receive that portion of that remuneration.
Gotcha. Thank you.
Is that a monthly $8,700 per student or?
About $8,700 from state apportionment. There's other funding sources the district receives. So when we report on our school report card, we look at the grand total of everything that came in, including levy and federal dollars and things along those lines. But when you look at the minimum state apportionment and take out the other factors, that's about $8,600, $8,700 on average. I can't remember the exact number, but this year went up $100 per student. So I think we're about $8,700.
Part of your question was though, that's per year, correct, Ed?
Yes, that's per year.
That was, she was asking about that.
Yeah, yeah. Per calendar year. So for our school year, that's what we receive per student. That apportionment is calculated every month. So every month, our funding changes based on how many come in or how many go out. So the first of every month, we count everybody that's here, and if it was a bad sick day and we lost 6% of our students, well, that factors into our FTE. We can't count those students. So we only can receive remuneration from who's actually here, and that's highly audited to make sure there's not fraud in that regard.
Good questions. Any others? We've got another question that came in through Facebook. We'll go ahead and answer that one. Looks like Rick saw this on Facebook. Is Hoarding School District getting any money from the U.S. Department of Education approval for Washington's plan for using the American Rescue Plan funds to support K-12 for supporting students' social, emotional, and mental health needs?
I don't know exactly. The, the federal funds flow into the Office of Superintendent of Public Instruction, and OSDI is the grantor arm and the auditor arm for the federal government. So those federal funds won't flow directly to the district, they flow to the state. And then districts can apply for what's called an I-grant and apply to receive that grant funding. And if we receive grant funding, part of our audit is to show that we've met the obligations and provisions of that grant. I do know that we have many partnerships related to social and mental health. Director Willis reported on a number of them last Thursday. I couldn't say expressly whether any of those directly tied to those funds or not, but I do know there was an increase in social, emotional, and U.S. Board have said that really is a target for years forward in their strategic plan. So I can't answer that specifically, but it's quite possible.
Great. Thank you. Rick, I'm assuming you will pass along that response?
Yes, I will.
Yeah. Or invite CJ to watch the video?
Yeah. They said they weren't able to download the Google app, but they plan on coming to the next meeting in person. And they sent me a link about the approval of this American Rescue Plan funds. Said there's a $618 million to go to Washington State.
I'm not sure how that might relate to ESSR or separate grants. Many of those lumped categories and what's permissible together. So it could be related to ESSR.
Yeah, it does say ESSR on it.
If it's ESSR, then yes. We have applied for every. If it's ESSER, then yes. We have applied for and received approval for ESSER one, ESSER two, and ESSER three grants. Each has a different amount of remuneration and a timeframe that it must be extended.
If that gets approved, is that, if, if, are we, if we're asking for the same thing on a levy, would that then take care of that and we would lessen that or would this just supplement it?
Those funds are separate, absolutely. So when we apply for the I-grant for ESSER, we have to name what that is. Thus far in the year, previous to my arrival, the board and the district have expended funds this year on intervention and student support. We, I would anticipate a significant add over the next year or two as we try to maximize all of those dollars and have that target for intervention. We, our early data, as you've seen, is telling us that many, many more students need social, emotional, mental, behavioral health. Part of our work as administrative team is to really unpack those goals now that we set that direction and have that question next week about what do we need that we don't have and who are the right people to get on the bus so we can get off after, early in the hiring season and bring them under our fold. But ESSER will not, that can't replicate what happens in the levy. Now, keep in mind, ideally over the next two years of, of levy, or excuse me, ESSER, this levy if approved in 2023, we get a piece of that in 2023, the majority in that twenty-four, twenty-five school year. So the way we're thinking about that is we bring on interventions and support, we'd really be looking to ESSER in the next year or two to support and be able to use levy to really support anything that we've deemed important, working, showing success. We want to be able to continue those supports. So that's kind of how we're thinking about that on our planning.
I think that's a really important part of this plan. And could you explain what ESSER is for anyone who's kind of not in the loop on that?
Sure. So the federal government, the three phases allotted money to schools, all fifty states, really for a broad range of purposes. It could be around HVAC improvements, it could be used around the personal protective equipment, purchasing and recurring supplies and sanitizers, you name it, or addressing learning loss for students. So there's about ten different categories in that bill. What the state of Washington does on behalf of the government, they manage that grant. So we have applied and we have to say, here's our plan use. And last June, Director Willis worked with our leaders and other staff to create a draft of a plan. And as we modify our change or proposed use, then we go into the I-grant system and tell the state how we re-advision using those resources. So much of our support thus far has been in around the world of intervention and direct student, student support. Early on, it was focused on PPE. We were spending tens of thousands of dollars just to be able to create the safe conditions to operate school even on a part-time basis. So that third grant, we have not extended yet, that third apportionment. And that's what we're really looking to next year and the year after as a two-phase approach to have a target that. And really, our interest would be primarily around learning loss, social, emotional, academic, behavioral interventions.
Thank you. Looks like Caroline raised her hand. Go ahead, Caroline. So we've had a few more people join the call. So welcome. And I'm just letting you know that this is an open forum and you're free to ask any questions that you might have about our levy or about the district in general. We've got a number of staff members here available to answer questions. And the whole board is here as well to make sure we are hearing from our community and listening to what's important to you. We've framed our questions. We want to know how we're doing. We want to know what concerns you have. And we'd love feedback on communication. That's something that's been important to us that we've worked on improving. And so we just would love some feedback on how we're doing. If you have any questions about that or comments about that. But you're actually free to ask any question you would like.
Since nobody raised their hand, I want to remind the people listening that if you don't ask your question now, you can always email us, email Ed, email the principals. We always read the emails. We are, we want to know about people's concerns or kudos too, you know. And so if you can't, if you don't feel comfortable now, then please email us because we, we want to hear from you. And not everybody feels comfortable speaking up, so email works great too.
There they are.
Well, next week's forum, the one that's in person, be, my apologies for the background noise. I'm picking up kids. Next week's forum, will it also have the kind of open forum like this at the end as well? I do, I've got some contacts that were not able to come to tonight's meeting, but anticipate coming next week. And I know that they would like to have questions and concerns heard as well.
Yes, absolutely. That's why we've done one here virtually to allow people to call in when you're picking up your kids for commuting home. And if anybody is quarantining at home, we wanted to be accessible to them. And next week, we will do the same format. So same levy presentation and open forum for community comments. So definitely encourage them to attend.
Thank you for that. And I just, I wanted to kind of piggyback a little bit, just in the sense, I'm, I work for the district as well. I'm the physical therapist assistant for the district, but I'm also a parent now with students in the district. And I, I wholeheartedly believe in the future that Mr. Hudson Mueller has for the district. And I appreciate that he and the rest of the board have been able to put these forums together to get our vision out there and be able to be heard and let our community know what these kids need and what we want as parents and community members. So thank you.
Thanks, Becca.
Thank you. I see Virginia raising your hand. Go ahead.
Yeah, just wanted to find out about how we're getting the word out to everybody.
The word out about the levy specifically or any district?
Yeah, just the levy.
Yeah.
I can speak to a few of the strategies unless board or somebody else would like to take it. I feel like I'm arguing questions, but happy to answer just to start. All right. A few primary strategies. We know that ordering get the word out is, is a challenge at times. And so we wanted to have a variety of communication strategies from the district's perspective. So part of that has been staff visits. We've been to all of our schools, sharing our story, our transportation department, facilities department. We've been to the senior center in town and just trying to get our word out to various senior groups. In addition to that, the mailer, went to all of our families, just a high level overview of what it is because you only have the front back, as well as a link to the website for more information. Trying to put a lot of information in the replacement levy link on our website so we can feed kind of the brass tacks questions like we're talking about tonight. Well, what's funded? What's not funded? Where do my dollars go? So we're trying to make that live on the website because that's also accessible in different languages. So it can be translated for our families that may not have English as a primary language. In addition to that, social media, anybody that is aligned to the Facebook, Twitter, Rashad O'Neill's been putting out what we will call smaller soundbites out there so that people can take the big presentation in social media appropriate bite-sized nuggets. So they'll put something about athletics or activities and just every couple few days, trying to get those posts out there. So we're keeping that communication going. So there's just a few of the strategies that come to mind. We know that really getting out to the heart of the people in the community and neighbors, talking to neighbors would be our hope and intent, but having a broader communication strategy. It's just tough getting the word out without a local newspaper coverage or things of that nature. We've worked about and tried to get neighbor talking to a neighbor. It's really the best we can try to do.
I missed the notice this afternoon. I think it was this afternoon, the Ording Combined PTA team had signs out and, you know, they were doing the waving and, you know, vote yes for Ording kids and things like that. And I know I've seen signs pop up in yards on my commute into, into work and school in the mornings too. So I know that's happening.
We did, I forgot the combined PTA. We met with them last week and shared our story with our combined PTA.
And there's also a community group mobilized to encourage our community to vote yes. So that is, you know, that's appreciated. And that group is a great source of information as well.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Yeah. Wonderful. All right. Well, it's seven o'clock. So if there are no additional questions, I would just like to thank everyone again for your participation. Those of you who hopped on the call midway through, I invite you to please email us. As Kathy said, we, we really encourage that conversation with everyone in our community, staff, students, and community members. And then also I invite you to our in-person forum next Wednesday, six o'clock. That's at the High School Performing Arts Center, which is that big room right at the front entrance of the building. And we'll be there with the same meeting. So some levy information and then an open forum, a chance to ask us any question. All right. Thank you, everyone. And we will go ahead and continue with our board agenda. So this is the public meeting so that all board members could attend. So before I close, I want to open up and ask the board if there are any additional comments you'd like to add.
Thank you, everybody, for participating. And thank you for the employees that stuck around. And thanks for everybody for working together on this.
Yes, thank you.
My comments as well. Thanks, everyone.
And thank you for having it on video, recording this and all that because I could still work and listen to what's going on.
Hi, Mary. It was good to see you briefly there for a minute. I'm glad you were able to call in.
And thanks for all you do for keeping us together. You guys are totally awesome. Thank you for everything you guys do. We really, really, really appreciate you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I think Ed, Matt, and Kevin did a great job explaining it. I can, I can understand it. So that's great.
Yes.
Yeah, it was good. It was really good.
Yes, gentlemen. Thank you very much. We will go ahead and adjourn the meeting at seven oh four tonight.